This week that we were gonna run for them because of the cold weather, we would have to run on diesel because gas wasn't even available this week. So, there's natural gas problems. We can make some assumptions and put it into a cost benefit about what the price will be, but it'll also be some pretty, I'd say not hard and fast assumptions at this point. There's other things you can do. I mean, we can run all of our engines right now, but some will be on gas, some will be on diesel. There's a limit as for running, that is, you have to run on a high cost fuel, is what it is. And how many times you would run in that situation is the key question.
Is unleashing a problem in the summertime then?
No, we still have the same limitations as far as the gas, so we only run, you know, what they're allowing us to run. Which is about nine megawatts is what it turned out. Versus the fourteen that we could normally quit out here for the power to. That's a little, that's a little short. So, it's at five megawatts, I think, that you're sure. But you can still run plenty, unless you just have to run a different fuel.
On a yearly basis, what percentage of our electric generation is sold off to somebody else?
Ooh, I, yeah, I'd say the majority of it right now. Mainly we run for the power. We don't run normally for ourselves unless there's some emergency going on.
So, we can adjust what we charge them according to what kind of fuel.
Well, they're just paid, yeah, they're, right. And actually, when they call on us and we pass along that fuel cost to them, they understand that when they call, of all of our engines, they want.
So, from that aspect, we pay.
Yeah, we don't, we don't lose it, we don't gain it, they, yeah. I mean, it's a right need in that. Right, if they're willing to pay that cost, and we did, we did that this summer, they called us and said, you know, if he comes, well, we want your diesel as well as your natural gases, and we ran them. And they, they paid the cost for that. So, how many times are you gonna be willing to do that? I don't know.
In the future. Glenn, do we contract any of that fuel ahead of time, or do we pay whatever the cost is when we run, we need it?
We have diesel, you know, on hand, but the natural gas is whatever, you know, whatever it is. Yeah, we're not, we're not gonna find that, not in the future, the gas on that, you know, that it is. But right, really, right now, it's just the gas pressure that happens right now. And that's really for their system reasons that they, they don't particularly work in that. So, with a pipe fee, seven or thousand, less than that, I would hope that, that's their estimate right now, the seven or thousand. And they would own it, we would not own it, we would not own it. It's more complicated than it should be, but that's what we got left now. All right, well, we're gonna keep working on that. There's probably some other options we could set up.
Well, let's see if we can get a meeting put together with the community society, or the local government, or the governing body, simply get something moving forward, so we can get that problem resolved.
Okay, all righty.
Looks like it's a city code or a district.
Chapter seven, is there a helpful law court code? First question we've had, and we've divided the copy of the law codes to the league as prepared or had prepared, and offered that as an option to our current code. It's a little more up to date, more comprehensive than what we're using right now. Specifically, it addresses some issues on exterior structures, such as dilapidation and that kind of, neglect, maintenance on exterior structures, not interior. It also prevents a two-year notice, in other words, you get a notice of January twenty fourteen, and that's good for, for two years, not just one year, as we've done, putting on significant changes in the new model code.
This gives you that latitude to go after the tests, that are not, are not safe, or just under.
Yes, under, yes, poor maintenance, or neglect, or dilapidation, that kind of thing. And of course, a deteriorating structure impacts the value of neighboring structures, you know, its properties. So, that's, that's why we've wrote a good.
Do you think this gives you more latitude compared to the one that we currently have?
Yeah, right now, I don't have any authority to go after a structure that's dilapidated, you know, but it's in poor, poor maintenance, unless I can show that it's dangerous and unsafe. And that would fall within the structures of codes. But, but yes, would allow us to address, if a code property owners, the structure needs paint, or needs, needs space ship and all, or whatever, if it's dilapidated, it's coming apart, you know. And there are some structures people actually live in, they're just that way right now.
So, if we were to take these new rules and apply them, how many houses do you think would be affected with, that are currently?
Oh, probably half a dozen or so initially, that we could talk about.
So, they'd be written up, they'd be given a?
They'd get the same notice as any other nuisance abatement notice, and it gives, it explains what the violation is, and it gives them a time to get that fixed. If it's just nuisance bait, like trash in the yard or something like that, we give ten days. I think if something like a structure where it's gotta do some maintenance, something like that, we'd probably get thirty to forty-five days. So, give it a good amount of time to get that done.
If pants do it, or we do it for you and bill you for it?
Yes. Or, or a signed complaint and notice appears, is served upon the violator, and he'll have to come and explain to the judge why he didn't comply.
Chris, do you in any way equate our cat problem with health issues?
Arguably, we could. Yeah, if cats now, if they're using a garden or whatever, to potty in, and of course, that's an odor, isn't it?
Well, that's a complaints I think.
But the, the solution is gonna be the same. We're, we're out of solutions, basically. You know, I can catch the cat, still don't have anywhere to go with it.
Well, I, I still think in a nutshell, maybe I'm hard on those, but I think we're being too kind. I think we've got a problem, and we know how to face it, and we just need to do it. To upset somebody, keep your cat in the hat outside. I don't know what, how else to handle it. We can't be responsible.
Okay. Chris, you said the two years, you were only giving, if someone has a house, I mean, that you're gonna give them two years?
No, no, no.
I misunderstood.
No, the two-year rules, if they violated in January of this year, they correct that, and if they have another violation, same guy, within two years, then that statute permits us to enforce on that first notice rather than reissuing notes. Recently, we, we adopted a repeat fed orders, all right? But the statute does permit up to two years in the nuisance abatement side. It has for almost ten years, I believe. We, we've just never used it that way.
I have a couple of questions. One, can you tell me where and what a definition of public officer is?
Well, it's not fine there.
No, it is not either one, that's why.
It's two random, the council would appoint, as I had, it could be the chief police, it could be a code enforcement officer, it could be, somebody else, it could be a city magistrate. Typically, it's gonna be, it's gonna be code enforcement officer.
Okay, and my other question, you. Section nine here, order of violation, the governing body shall serve upon, I don't recall that we've ever done that, and that's in both of them.
No, you acquired a code enforcement officer to do that on your behalf.
Okay.
In your, in your general sections, if, there's a section for governing body appointing him to do that on your behalf?
You could probably appoint, if you may, on that, a particular committee.
I'd love to, yeah, we'd work together.
Not really, well.
Yeah, I don't know. An opportunity.
Now, the right of entry, seven dash two zero three, that just implies to going on the exterior problem.
That's correct, that's correct, that's right.
And is that in here several times because there are different ordinances? And it has to be in each one?
Well, well, it's repeated off in each section, or in each chapter, I couldn't think. But.
My question was, does it need to be?
Well, I don't know.
It's helpful for me, at least in court, that I can, we can just, a lot of times, I have to physically show individuals the chapter that we're referring to, and it's helpful if they see everything there, rather than have to go to the general section and go back. That would be more helpful, and I would keep it.
Chris, on seven four one C, consider dust and air pollution?
Yes.
Well, that's one reason I wanna get rid of dirt streets, but where I'm at, I get dust of coals bugger over there.
Right. I don't know how to force that, because they're outside the city limits. So, they're not in our jurisdiction.
Well, we could fix that.
Is there anything by KNEH that regulates that?
I don't know.
For grain dust emission?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't, you can set.
We, we can call an ass. Tenderness support from state has been.
City, yeah.
Or.
Yeah, that's city Lincoln.
Yeah. And that's just because they don't have the manpower, you know, to respond to everybody's complaints like that. About dollars.
And all these things are contaminants, they're probably at your discretion, if you think that they are.
They are. They are, at my discretion, however, I've still gotta be able to show truth in courts, right? That I have, that I have a solid ground. So, I'm gonna have to do my research, I'm gonna have to, you know, a good call, a great legal call, I can go forward with that. So, it's not just because I want it, like, if I can't.
Well, something that's offensive to you may not be offensive to me, that's why I'm asking.
Exactly, exactly. And that's always the dilemma I'm in, it's always kind of a big gray area out there. One man's treasures, another man's trash, you see?
Which makes a difference whether it's one or the other, because I can build more of an engine that might try to do one of the old ones. Even the rock grid clean up. It's not bad.
Well, yeah, if I may, go back to article three, on page seven dash three, what about junk vehicles? A junk vehicle is any vehicle that's unregistered, inoperable, it's incomplete, or is in a junk or wrecked condition. So, if I see a vehicle tipping on the street or in a yard with a flat tire, and it's been there for ten days or more, then I'll send a notice to that property owner, I'll try to figure out who owns the vehicle, and even go with the owner of the vehicle, or the head of household on that property, and, and serve that notice to. If the vehicle is tarp, it must be a question whether it's tarp or loaded on a trailer or something like that, if it's still considered a junk vehicle, I've always considered that it was. But there's been several people with years that I told them, well, we refuse the code, but I bring that up. So, kinda need, kinda like to hear your opinion on that.
If the car's, if the car's on a trailer, I mean, it could be like a race car that's just come back and been crashed up, and they're gonna work on it, not necessarily an abandoned vehicle, I mean.
Junk vehicle, junk vehicle, not abandoned.
Well, right, I mean, it's, it's obviously been worked on, because it's on a trailer, unless.
They can sit there all year long.
On a trailer.
I don't know the word, but I thought I read it here, that it said that if it wasn't a junk vehicle, I mean, it had to be inside of a building.
Right, right.
So, a tarp's not a building, so.
No, that's correct, that's correct. Yeah, yeah, they've got, if they were junk vehicle, or a vehicle that, that we would term junk, yeah, that may be a kind of offensive phrase, depends what the phrase is, if they, if they were parked at the garage, they're on their property, that's fine, outside and on it. But if it's in clear view of the public.
What if you get, what if you get a complaint from a neighbor?
I investigate those complaints, and if.
I mean, if you think about, there's certain areas, I guess, where this must be acceptable, you know, those people who use race cars all the time. If I had a neighbor who had a race car, and he was over there working on it, never died, racing the engine, and it wouldn't last very long, I'll tell you.
That probably be a noise nuisance.
But you know it happens.
And we, we could, we could work on that, as a noise.
Some people just don't complain about that.
Yeah, I know.
It's gonna be, like, a truck or something that sat in a backyard, like, for three, four years, not moved in their own backyard, if they got a tag, they can do that.
A tag is just part of it. I mean, if it's properly registered, that's part of it. If it's still inoperable, if the vehicle will not do what it's intended to do, then it's in violation of our code. And I'd hope I wouldn't have to go for three years. Three, three months is really kind of excessive. I try not to be too onerous on that, I wanna make sure that I know it's been there at least thirty days or more before I go after it.
Well, after three years, who knows, it started or not?
Right, yeah. I have the, when I serve the notice, they have to show me that it's currently registered and operable, I haven't drive around the block. If they can't come around the block, then it's, they take it. No, just kind of, if you think, if being tarp is okay, we'll leave it go, otherwise, oh, oh.
That's not what the code says.
I'm not with it.
That's not what the code says.
Fair enough.
What are some of the problems that you ran into court with current rules? I, I remember when I was on planning commission, you were talking about a particular Trumpson House, and he said, you know, had a bunch of dilapidated cars. What were some of the problems that?
Well, that would be the zoning issue, that was, they were parking vehicles while they kept lock, I think. And that's, that's a different issue, that's zoning, and we may touch on zoning, it's the very last chapter, so we may talk about some of that. But, so, there, there are overlapping issues, lots of them, it may be zoning, it may be nuisance abatement, it may be both. And in that case, I served two notices, the same thing, one for the zoning violation, one for the nuisance.
I would like to see the planning commission readdress this parking in your front yard.
That, that'll come up, I think that's clearly on my mind, I've heard that quite a bit. And the countries of plan consultants are gonna help us update our zoning regulations to be commensurate with, and harmonizing with the comprehensive plan. So, we'll go after that, I mean, this summer sometime.
What do you talk, play for? Well, if you look up, there's a couple of places up on Hurst, I got some beautiful homes coming down Hurst Street, but there's two houses, where people just literally park in their front yard. It'd be an ordinance, if it wasn't a driveway, do the.
And down at Court Street, you're getting a semi-truck that's parked on the ground, it's got a semi-truck, personally, a little parked on the street, looks like parking on a regular residential house.
There again, I guess I look at, if that was next door to me, what would I think?
Well, sure, sure, yeah. It, it was not in the, the last zoning regulation that was passed here, six, seven years ago, or five, six years ago. So, that was removed.
Well, that's, I'm glad.
Yes. So, that'll come back up. Open burning, and you just recall that Chief Rugg, you talked about that, page seven dash seven. And one of his thoughts was that open burning would be something that he has authority on. And the section actually addresses that, it calls for a, a pollution control authority, and that would be the chief police, the fire chief, and code enforcement officer. Just that, we should meet, that we would meet, and at least the two of us would, would be a court, it would take a court to make any decisions on that. I'm okay with that, often, it's difficult for us to meet like that, but on some of those issues, but.
Do you have that many issues?
No, no, we don't. There's, there's once or twice a year, maybe an open burning issue, has to be somebody that wants a fire pit in a yard or something like that, and I squelch that usually, authorize, I may not tell them, they can use something like a, like a little wood burner, like little sp, those little pits. It's got a screen over, you know, so it's got a spark arrest or something like that, then, then I'd go with that. If it's something equivalent to, let's say, a charcoal grill, then I'm okay with that. If it's, if it's a fireplace, a natural fireplace designed for that purpose, has a spark arrestor, I'm really good with that. If it's burning a large pile of tree stumps and something like that, that's Chief Rugg's security story. And so, there's a kind of a division of authority there, that he wanted to address. And I think, I think that the section covers it fine, we just work together to do that, but, I mean, the county requires fire, burn permit anyway, so, unless you have other issues or questions that I have to.
One thing, we, we have no authority over, I assume that the non-burning in the city is a matter of pollution plus fire hazard, but we have no control over somebody burning right on the city limits, and the smoke drifting all over the town.
I don't know how we'd enforce that. Again, if it's out, if they're outside the city limits, and they've got a burn permit, you know, then, then they got a burn permit.
The three miles zoning thing doesn't apply?
No, we don't, you know, three blocks to terrible jurisdictions, which is, is what you're, you're looking at. And right now, that, you know, that doesn't apply.
Would be some kind of private action, somebody who knows about that.
You know, like he filled up West Towns, when I'd fire chief, they wanted to burn, they always called me, and I wanted to make sure that everything was going away.
And that's courtesy, we don't want to get that courtesy. There's been, there's fire from smoke around that burned from the city to the, to outside the city, and somebody outside the city has called and, and wants us to enforce that. So, I kinda did, spoke with the guy that was burning, and he said, they.
You got that situation figured out?
Haven't heard any more about it, so, I think so.
Is that the one I talked to?
Yes. While we're on this section, it addresses, talks about fees, those fees probably should go on the fee resolution, for a burning permit or burn permit. That is, if, if, say, Chief Rugg authorizes a, a, a couple of big piles of tree stumps out on the outskirts, and, and if they wanna burn that sometime in the winter, if he authorizes that, they get a burn permit from us, they'd be a fee from us, those fees would go on the fee resolution and not in the, not in the code. So, I, I met a lot of campfires, I've just talked about that. I don't permit the campfires and burn bits, you know, like you plant up late, unless you think we should, and we'll address that somewhere.
Chris, on seven four seven exemptions?
Yes.
Is there provision for campfires in approved camping areas? Are you, what are you, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, the only, the only proof, the only proof to camping area, we'll tell you right now, is the park.
And the only thing that's down there is the barbie stands.
Right, yeah.
I mean, there's no pit that's down there.
So, there are, there are no, no fire rings down there, anyway. If somebody wanted to do something, they may or may not contact us and ask if they can.
Well, this is, this is they can, as long as they're not wanting to force it in diameter, so, I don't know, if they wanna change that, we'll have to make a taser.
If they collect firewood off the river, then they're supposed to burn that, and they'll let it.
So, they could have a campfire?
Yeah, up to four feet in diameter.
Well, could we get around that by just putting up a sign down there at the park, saying, no, no campfires allowed?
Yeah, I mean, you have to take it out of here, though.
Right, right.
And I don't know that anybody does it, I mean, I.
I've, I've never had it, never had a complaint, never had a call on it.
I mean, out it.
Parks and Rec would usually call me if there's something like that to, to go down and inform.
I mean, that grass is, that grass is nice enough down there, I can't imagine.
Well, I can.
It'd be broken with it up somewhere.
I walked down, that's why I've been, I've never seen any fire down there.
Where they built?
If I could, you could take that out, then I'll figure it out.
Okay, my favorite section, article five, heat. Just made a couple of notes. In the past couple of years, we've had gardens in the front yards, or a bunch of plots all around there. It may be corn, tomatoes, whatever else, and a front yard.
If it's, if it's like the cans of dairy, I think that's kinda.
Yeah, well, you know, whatever, let that be your goal. I've, I've been opposed to, and I've put the kibosh on, on a couple of them. One of them got away from me this year, and it was already, he was already getting made up there before I realized it.
Well, isn't there something that says you can't have anything over so high in your front yard?
Yes, yeah. Just talk about gardens, I've got a garden, we, most of us have gardens, they're in the backyard, and they're garden plots, you know, and, and we don't say, say anything about that. I mean, it's corn, and beans, or tomatoes, or whatever else, in a garden, just front yards.
How do you define a garden, because there's flower gardens.
They're not weeds.
Yeah.
They're not weeds.
How do you define weed, you know?
Well, this does define weeds, in section five, seven, five oh two, it's a definition of weeds, you know. Some people argue that, that a woman's weed is a flower, and we've had that discussion before, here. But, yeah, flowers, you could be, tenias, or zinnias, and zinnias would be up here. But the garden and the front yard just kinda threw me off a little bit, wondering if they're gonna bring it up, and see what it's supposed to.
Well, I'm thinking, this definition of weeds here, there's a tomato plant, it's not meat, this definition of weed, it's not, it's not woody, it's not brush, it's not much of grass.
If it's permitted, that's fine, I don't have a problem with it.
I mean, if somebody wants to have Cortez, if they're, if they got that guy given right to have Cortez.
Well.
Because they have to keep a weed in.
The city has hired bees to make the determination on what Cortez is.
Well, and then what, what's, what does that do for the adjacent property? I mean, if I've got, if my neighbor has a, you know, a corn plot growing out in this front yard, I mean, that's not gonna make my, my property or the other one, you know. Well, I mean, I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, I, I hope they're not listening right now, but, like, the Hydrants, they have that rock garden around their house, it's a beautiful house, it's, it's got large plants in it. I don't think it looks as tasteful in any way, it's just by this definition, though, weeds, we're saying they gotta go. And I can take a couple of the properties, have some flower gardens, they're corner lot, they don't really have a backyard, and so they put all their, their corn lot in chestnut, and they just work on it. Well, but you got, I mean, I would, for me, they don't have weeds growing up, I mean, they're butterfly bushes, and pampers grass, and decorative grasses, and things like that, I mean, that's not, I don't consider those weeds.
The offensive covering thing, Chris?
I'm sorry?
The offensive covering thing, is.
Define it.
Or, I know you do a lot of complaint driven stuff, and, and it's too bad that people who live adjacent to the parks don't follow or comply or whatever, then that would leave that would leave you the option to do something about it, I mean, now.
Well, maybe, still gotta be able to...
Well, yeah, it's not even...
Would that cover those tomato plants that hang up people's porches, those upside down bananas? Yeah, and that issue, I, 'cause I know, I forgot those, I mean, is, is that a classified as a yard?
Might be, might be. I want, I want, you guys to tell me. I think it's so hard to do.
Last point is, once you start, where do you stop?
Yeah, gotta wait till I get my next move here.
Yeah, mostly, well, let's move on to that now, yeah.
How much trimming would you, is required in a yard? We mow the yard, how much trimming is required?